Okay, it's Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, September 5th. And it's been a month since we last met. We last met on August 8th. And in this month in Trump, we've had the -- because some of these things affect us. We had the Charlottesville events and the President's statements. We had a threat to close the wall, close the government over building the wall, which hopefully will be, will go away. An announcement that the federal government will be making military equivalent available for police. And I certainly hope our police department will not be taking the federal government up with that very kind offer. There's the pardon of Joe Arpaio, who I think represents a lot of, doesn't represent the values certainly of the town, and hopefully, certainly not our police department, and hopefully not this board. And then, of course, today, the President announced the rescinding of the DACA program, potentially making children, folks, children who came here, immigrants who came here as children, through no fault of their own, being subject to deportation back to their parents' home country. And many of them, they've never set foot or speak the language of their home country. And then, of course, last week, Hurricane Harvey and what's going on in Houston. And I think our hearts go out to folks in Houston who've lost homes and belongings and there's been loss of life. And I think those kinds of events kind of get me thinking how fortunate we are here and in a community that has, I think, great values. And it causes me to think about what are our emergency plans? And I think we should be looking at them and make sure they're up to date. It's so easy just to say, you know, go through the drill every couple of years. But what's going on in Houston really drives it home that those kinds of plans are important, and especially now that we are in the midst of hurricane season and there's a hurricane bearing down on Florida and potentially could, you know, we don't know where it's going to go after that. So, on that very happy sobering note, if anyone wants to add anything, by all means.
I'd just like to add that, you know, things are happening elsewhere, but they're also impacting us here in Brookline. I'll just mention one thing that sort of struck me. Houston has been devastated. And to rebuild is going to require a lot of labor. And we don't have that labor. And we're running it out of the country. And that's a problem that we have here in the Northeast. So, you know, get ready for a difficult time economically because, you know, the very foundation upon which we can grow as a society is being undermined by the lack of labor that we have in this country. It's a huge problem. It doesn't get a lot of attention, but I think, yeah, just be aware.
Anyone here for public comment?
Let me quickly, just on a little bit of a happier note, highlight an event that's coming up in a couple of weeks, Brookline Day. It's a sort of an annual town celebration, gathering opportunity, and a good opportunity to learn more about some of our emergency medical plans. The SERC team, the Emergency Medical Reserve Corps, the Police and Fire Department are there. So, I agree with the Chair's statement that we need to revisit, examine our emergency plans. But there are some good things in place right now, and people can learn more about them by attending Brookline Day. The 24th of this month, September, Lars Anderson Park, 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. And then there's a road race in the morning that I think, the kids' race starts at 7:00 a.m. And the adult race starts at 8:30. So, I'm sure we'll hear more about it in the coming weeks, but want to put it on people's radar now that it's post-Labor Day.
Ms. Fröllie.
Thank you for giving me a second chance to remember something.
Sure.
I too have happy news. We start our social at the Potterham Library. I don't think, I'm not sure if there's any seniors here, but if you think you're a senior, that includes you.
Depends, depends on your definition.
You're welcome to come. We always have coffee and pastries, or almost always. Even if I have to bake them, you get to pasties. The rec department is graciously, once again, providing the hot dogs and the hamburgers and the veggie burgers. And they're a lovely young group of people who do the cooking and the serving and then sit down and eat with us. And we love having them, and they seem to love us. So, I just want to know, want people to know that it's this Friday is our first of six Fridays. And the first one is the cookout, and the last one will be a free lunch provided by our state representative. That will be October 13. And in between, several of our department representatives will be giving talks and training. Almost everything has to do with aging, seniors being able to stay in their home and be safe. So, we have the fire department coming. We have the health department coming. We have wonderful talks planned. And 10:30 on Friday morning, till 1:00, Potterham Bridge Library, 959 West Roxbury Parkway. And we now have an open sidewalk around the circle. So, if you take the 51 bus, you will now be able to access the library from the bus drop. I'm very proud of that and very grateful to Mr. Papa Sturgeon, as well as to Senator Cream for working with me to make that happen. It's been a long process, but it's ready. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Moving on to our miscellaneous calendar, we have the minutes of August 8th, a month ago. I have a couple of little edits. Anyone else?
I gave, okay.
Okay. I will move acceptance of the minutes as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. And the next question is the question of honoring Private First Class John T. Mulhane for service to his country with a flag raising. Mr. McGrady.
Good evening. It's our honor to honor PFC John T. Mulhane. His son is with us right now. He was also a town retiree. He gave his life for his country in perspective. John was three when his father died. He was the oldest of three children.
Wow.
So, in that family, you know, soldier on for their whole lives. So, this, he's honored at a, he's honored with an honor square. He's on our war memorial. And the state of Massachusetts is recently, when we'll be presenting it at the ceremony, honored the Mulhane family with the Massachusetts Medal of Liberty. I put a couple pamphlets up, so if you can give a little information if you're interested in it. And this will happen at 8:00 a.m. on September 18th. And there'll be a collation afterwards at the Veterans Post. We'll be raising the flag and presenting to the Mulhane family the medal, excuse me, one sec, the Medal of Liberty, which looks like a purple heart. And it's for the families to honor what their sacrifice is. So, I asked you to vote to honor him that day. I also have some other interesting news. I won't go into details because the family wants to keep it, the ceremony private, but another veteran we lost in World War II, Second Lieutenant Richard M. Horowitz. He was a navigator on a bomber. Was lost in a mission over Italy. There were 11 men in the plane. Five of their bodies were recovered at the, after the mission, six weren't. In 2012, they've discovered, European dive team discovered the plane at the bottom of the Italianic. 2013 or '14, the United States government recovered the remains of six soldiers, brought them to Hawaii, where they desalinated the bones and did DNA testing. And they're returning Lieutenant Richard Horowitz to Brookline. He's coming home after 73 years.
Wow.
Be coming home this fall. The family's going to do a private ceremony. I talked to the family. We're going to honor the request. I met with the U.S. Army Casualty and the funeral home, local funeral home will be doing this, and the family and some other groups. And possibly after the ceremony, we'll be doing a flag raising for Lieutenant Horowitz as well. So, those are my requests for coming up. Also, just a quick caveat, I do the, I maintain the SEP for the town, Community Emergency Management Plan, and we are updating it. We updated it this summer. I have one of my, one of my veterans who's an intern, Arthur Segway, just returned from getting married in Uganda. And he's working on understanding our energy in case of an emergency. He's working with the Building Department, the Public Works, and the IT Department on that. I have another one of my veterans who's going to just start going through the SEP and updating the phone numbers to make sure they're all correct. So, we are moving to keep everything up to date.
Good. Thank you. So, with great pride, I will offer a motion of honoring Private First Class John T. Mulhane for his service to his country with a flag raising ceremony on Monday, September 18th, 2017, at 8:00 a.m. in front of Town Hall?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Next item is a question of authorizing the Chair to execute a letter to the State Legislature's Joint Committee on Transportation Utilities and Energy to support increasing the renewable portfolio standard to 3%. And I'll note that each of us individually has signed a version of this letter at the request of Mary Dewitt. And this is placed on the calendar at the request of Selectmen Heller. So, Selectmen Heller.
Yes. So, this, this letter would ask the legislature to enact a increase in the renewable portfolio standard, which is also abbreviated as RPS, currently at 1% per year to 3% per year. Currently, the, we've gotten to the 12% mark. So, everybody's electricity is from renewable, renewables up to only 12%, unless you're in a different program.
Like Brookline Green.
Like Brookline Green. And then you can, you can opt for more. But the reason that people are interested in increasing the number is that at the rate of 1%, it's going to take the rest of the century to get us to the place we want to be. And in terms of climate change, that's not fast enough. So, this, so if we, if we increase it to 3% annually, it will bring us in line with the goals that we have enunciated ourselves and that have enunciated at the state level. So, in 2050, I believe the figure is that 2050, we would be at 80% of our goal. So, it's way better than waiting until the end of the century. We put the language that we would support the bill and the number, I don't have the letter in front of me unfortunately, my packet is so big that it got buried someplace here. But we wrote in, oh, thank you. We wrote in, it's Bill H. 2700, but we also added, or it's equivalent, because sometimes these things change and the number changes, and we want them to know that we're serious about the issue of increasing the RPS to 3%. So, we would reduce greenhouse gas emissions, as I said, by 80% by the year 2050. And we had already passed a war, the town meeting passed a resolution overwhelmingly to support the Paris Climate Agreement in May. And this is just a further extension of that. So, I hope you would all vote yes. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll move that we approve, that we authorize the Chair to execute a letter to the State Legislature's Joint Committee on Transportation Utilities and Energy to support increasing the renewable portfolio standard to 3%. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next item is a question of authorizing Chair to execute a contract for a grant with the Mass Historical Commission's Survey and Planning Grant for multi-phase survey update of cultural and architectural resources in the greater Aspen Wall Hill area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. Consistent with your prior authorization, the Planning Department submitted an application to Mass Historic for a grant to undertake an inventory of Aspen Wall Hill. Our planners were successful in securing that $20,000 grant. And I'd like to acknowledge the work of both Tonya Love Day and Megan Henry Han Richardson for their hard work, as well as their willingness to use their time to match, to provide the match for the grant. The department issued an RFP. We, a selection committee was established consisting of the preservation planners and the Chair of the Preservation Commission. And subject to the approval of MHC, they have tentatively selected a consultant. So, I am here tonight with two requests. One is to, that you authorize the Chair to execute the required contract with MHC. And if you are willing, to also authorize the Chair to execute a contract with a consultant whose confirmation will be established by MHC.
Okay. Any comments or questions about this grant? So, what, what's going to happen with the grant? So, it's just gathering information, basically?
Well, it's very intense information about probably 90 homes within the Aspen Wall area. These are carefully selected between the consultant and the staff. And there are a considerable number of historic, potentially historic properties within the area. Then they will gather very specific information on each of the selected properties. And this information is consistent with Mass Historic regulations. So, if any properties are deemed of sufficient merit, we could in fact proceed to secure National Historic Registered Designation. It could be the grounds for an LHD or an NCD. So, it's the framework of information that we, this, we have information on Aspen Wall, but it dates back to '78, which actually predates the most recent MHC regs. So, it's outdated information.
Access to properties, is this just going to be sort of a paper survey or maybe some photographs from the street? Or are we going to be interacting with property owners and seeking access to the interior of houses or?
No, my understanding is strictly external. It's fact finding. And quite honestly, it's only a $20,000 grant and maybe $20,000 worth of staff time. So, it's not an enormous.
Doesn't go very far, yeah.
Right.
Okay. So, I'll move that we authorize Chair to execute the following connection with grant funding received through the Mass Historical Commission's Survey and Planning Grant Program for a multi-phase survey update of cultural and architectural resources in the greater Aspen Wall Hill area of Brookline. A contract between the town and Mass Historical, and a contract between the town and the selected consultant to conduct the first phase of the multi-phase survey. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Steinfeld. We have some contract amendments. Mr. Masak. First one relates to the Unified Arts Building. And then we have an elevator project in Unified Arts and Lynch Recreation Center. And then we have design management in connection with the Water Department Garage Repairs. Mr. Masak.
Yes, these are all continuing appropriations. The first one is for the building envelope roof work. We've done the roof at the UAB and the front entrance, and this will continue with the building envelope. The second amendment is the last, maybe the last, of the work we've identified for the elevators at the UAB and Lynch Rec. And then finally, the last is in assessment of the floor over at the Water Department, which is in bad need of repair. So, the first part is to do the assessment, get a budget, and then figure out where we are from there.
Okay.
Those are the three amendments.
Any questions, comments? I see none. So, I'll move that we approve the following three contract amendments. Amendment number three, an increase in the amount of $29,755 to the contract with Rousseau Barr Associates in connection with the building envelope repair and roof replacement program at the Unified Arts Building. Excuse me. Amendment number two, an increase in the amount of $55,450 of the contract with CBI Consulting in connection with Unified Arts Building and Lynch Recreation Center Elevator Modifications Project. And amendment number seven, an increase in the amount of $5,200 to the contract with Desmond Design Management in connection with the Water Department Garage Repairs Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And this is you again, Mr. Masak. And this is.
Yes, sir.
A bigger contract.
And they get bigger.
For owner, project manager, manager services with Hill International in the amount of
As I, the Building Department has two internal owners, project managers. The workload is getting to the point where we needed to go outside and look for an outside OPM. Our first project, we felt, or I was pushed into, I mean that in a good way.
Encouraged.
Encouraged, thank you. We were encouraged to get outside OPM for the high school.
Voluntold.
Because of, huh?
Voluntold?
No. So, this is outside OPM service to oversee the project for the high school design and construction aspect.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I'll simply note that this is a large contract, and the fact that we've got two internal owner, project reps is obviously saving us, has saved us a tremendous amount of money over the last 10, 15 years.
Right.
So, just something I didn't want to let pass by without calling it out.
Right. But it's only two, and we have a lot going on.
Exactly.
We have Devotion and the Ninth School. We have other minor projects all around town, and it adds up. And this project, because of the size of it and the cost of it and the complexity, especially with the negotiations and permitting with the MBTA, we really felt we needed expertise and help in managing that. And there's still a substantial role for Ray, who's been the project manager, because we need somebody in the town to coordinate all these efforts. So, you know, so far, I, we've met with Hill and representatives from Hill, and we've been impressed with their knowledge and their organizational skills. And I think it's going to be huge assistance to us to have them on board this year.
Okay. So, I'll move that we award and execute an owner's project manager services contract with Hill International in the amount of $239,994 in connection with the Brookline High School Expansion Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Oh, you're still with us.
I'm not leaving.
And this is, this is to award a schematic design services contract with William Ron Associates Architects, Inc., in the amount of $1.5 million, also in connection with the Brookline High School Expansion Project.
Well, what I can say is typically when we do, we'll negotiate for schematic design, which is in line with other schematic designs for this size project based on the database that's been collected by the Mass School Building Authority. Also, as Exhibit A has a spreadsheet, and what we do in concept is we agree, when we do agree with the, well, the final scope of the project, we've agreed that 10% fee for whatever the construction cost would be appropriate. And we brought that before the Building Commission, and they agreed as well. So, we agree in concept what the overall fee will be. And it's significant, well above $10 million. So, that when we come forward again, we know that we've negotiated everything in good faith. So that we're not negotiating one thing and then be surprised at the end. So, you also negotiate schematic design at this point, and then the overall fee. So, the architect has agreed to a 10% fee as well.
Okay. I've heard great things about this firm. I have people unsolicited calling me, congratulating us on the selection of this architect. That's never happened to me before, so.
I'm pleased to hear it. The committee of seven had a very long interview process. We interviewed, I think it was four firms, and we struggled. And, but we ended up with Ron, and I think, and I'm hoping that it will be great. We wanted, as, you know, architect, this is going to be a building on, at 111 Cypress, will really be a signature building for the town. And an expansion of the high school in that way with a new building and in addition to some renovations at the main building, make it an especially complex and interesting project. So, and Ron does have an excellent reputation. So, we're hopeful that we will have an excellent product. And so far, again, they've attended a meeting or two, and it's been a good experience. And they seem to have a path forward for what they want to do. And they understand the deadlines and the kind of crunch we're under. So, I think it's, so far, it's all good.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And I'll move that we award and execute a schematic design services contract with William Ron Associates in the amount of $1.5 million in connection with the Brookline High School Expansion Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair, Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Masak. You're done with us, or we're done with you.
Good next.
Mr. Quigley, how are you doing? So, this is two change orders related to the devotion school.
Yes, indeed. Change order number 12 is an increase of $101,624 if approved. I can run through the 12 items, 11 items quickly if you wish.
Don't have.
Okay. And change order number 13 is a credit in the amount of $407,501, primarily the return of unused funds in the GMP bid contingency for electrical bid.
So, how are we doing?
We're doing well.
Are we still on track?
Yeah, the goal right now is to finish the utility work to the building. A lot was accomplished over the summer. And also to.
And also to complete the building envelope before winter. And so at the moment, we're on schedule and on budget.
Okay. Music to our ears. Any questions or comments?
No, I would say that the Devotion Building Committee will be meeting later in the month. It's first meeting after some time, because we're in the construction phase. But it will hear, you know, some detail from Tony Quigley about the project. And in addition, Mr. Quigley has given me as the Board of Selectmen rep, and Helen Charlofsky as the school committee rep, and Ken Kaplan as the building commission rep, a tour over the summer, so we got to see how it's coming along, and it looks beautiful. So, you know, we're hopeful that it will stay on time and on budget and be a real asset.
Yeah, there are many things that could, that are issues, there are issues every day, but we work to resolve them. So it's, at the moment, we're on budget, and we're going to work to stay that way. And on schedule, and we're going to work to stay that way.
Okay. Driving by the project, it's kind of interesting watching it take shape. And as the facade is being put on, starting to really be able to picture what this building is going to look like. And it's big.
It's big, very big.
Right. So with that said, with the comment, "It's big", I'll move that we approve the following two change orders to the contract with Shoma Design and Construction in connection with the renovations in addition to the Edward Devotion School. Change order number 12, an increase in the amount of $101,624. And change order number 13, a decrease in the amount of $407,501. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the next item is amendment number 21, an increase in the amount of $13,750 to the contract with HMFH Architects in connection with Devotion School.
Yes, the, originally, this has come as a result that the, there's 4,000 cubic yards of soil remaining to be removed from the site for disposal. And all the soil has to be pre-characterized. And estimates were made prior to construction as to what the total amount of soil was. And we have exceeded those amounts. And the cost of this is to obtain, the purpose of this is to obtain samples, conduct lab work, and prepare soil profiles for off-site disposal so that we remain in compliance with DEP regulations.
Always a good thing.
Right. Okay. I'll move that we approve amendment number 21, an increase in the amount of $13,750 to the contract with HMFH Architects in connection with renovations in addition to the Edward Devotion School. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
And the next item is a new pumper truck. Chief Ward, what's going on?
Good evening. We're here for the new engine six. I brought my head of my design team to answer any questions for you. We have Chief of Ops Flaherty and Head Mechanic, Charles Driver. I know there were a few questions on engine six, and Chief Flaherty spearheaded that for me.
Selectman Franco has some questions.
Everyone looks at me. We run a variety of different types of, different makes of apparatus in town. I've got a handy-dandy chart, which was supplied to me earlier today. It looks like we've got a KME, a couple of KMEs, some Saffron's, some Pierce, an International, and then amongst the vehicles, a variety of different makes. I'm wondering if we're trying to get towards a single unified make, and if that desire to unify towards a single maker played into this at all? Or are we looking for the best piece of equipment for a particular station or a particular part of town?
The concept of using one manufacturer was a part of our discussions. But each of these pieces of apparatus were bought in different timeframes. So after an exhaustive process and evaluating four different manufacturers, we found that KME was in fact the best manufacturer at the most reasonable price. They were very accommodating in the initial design phases, and they have been in the past. So there's no indication that they won't be in the future as far as we draw through this process.
Great. And then my second question is looking at the spec sheet that was supplied to us, which I assume were deviations from the base model. I didn't see anything about spraying the undercarriage to prevent corrosion or rust. And that's an issue that we had with another piece of apparatus just six months or a year ago, where we had to go out and purchase a new ladder truck off-cycle. So I'm wondering if that isn't a standard offering by KME, why it's not on the rate sheet? Or is it something that you do sort of aftermarket?
It is. In fact, KME does not offer any type of undercoating treatment. And so once we take receipt of this piece of apparatus, and it's been accepted by the town, we're going to purchase undercarriage protection for this piece of apparatus. And we're actually in the process of almost nearing completion in taking each of our pieces of apparatus and putting undercarriage treatment on it. And we do, we recognize the problems that we had in the past, when we had to get rid of those two ladder trucks, the rust and corrosion. So we're on the right steps.
Perfect. Thank you very much for the information.
Not a problem.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll move that we approve amendment, no. I'll move that we, going backwards, move that we approve and execute an agreement for the purchase of a pumper truck in the amount of $622,139.60 with Bulldog Fire Apparatus Inc. under the HGAC Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And next item is accepting a gift from Chestnut Hill Realty for an amount of up to $10,000 for support in the creation of the zoning bylaw necessary to implement the Hancock Village MOA. Why don't I take that? We are in the process, well, later tonight, we're going to be signing the warrant for a town meeting. And we hired counsel to help support us in the effort and help draft the bylaw that town meeting's going to be considering. And Chestnut, we hired the party, and Chestnut Hill is paying for it. And they had no control over the attorney. These were attorney services. It's just, it was, this is basically a reimbursement for services that we ordered and is used to support our efforts in draft, creating zoning. So any other, any questions on that? Okay. Seeing none, I'll move that we accept this gift from Chestnut Hill Realty for an amount of up to $10,000 for support in the creation of the zoning bylaw necessary to implement the Hancock Village MOA. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is a question of adopting a proclamation acknowledging October 21st and 2nd, marking the 200th anniversary of the birth of Baha'u'lla, the founder of the Baha'i faith. And we have a proclamation. Okay. We have a proclamation marking the anniversary of the birth of Baha'u'lla, the founder of the Baha'i faith, who brought a message of human dignity, capacity, and oneness suited to the requirements of contemporary life. And I'll just read the resolve clause as modified by Selectman Green. Resolve that the town of Brookline recognizes, recognizing the value of the religious diversity, among other types of diversity of the town, acknowledges the bicentennial bicentennial of the birth of the Baha'u'lla, the founder of the Baha'i faith. And for the resolve, the town of Brookline urges all citizens to use this bicentennial bicentennial as an opportunity to reach out and welcome to our community the followers of the Baha'i faith, together with the followers of other faith traditions and nonreligious traditions that make up the diversity of Brookline. Any questions or comments? Then I'll move that we approve this proclamation. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Last items on our miscellaneous calendar. We have some temporary alcohol licenses. And Selectman Franco will help me in making sure that all the paperwork is there. So I'll move that we grant a permit to serve alcoholic beverages, non-sales wine and beer only, to Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a wedding reception to be held on Saturday, September 9th, from 4:00 to 11:00 at 15 Newton Street. Also move that we grant a permit to serve alcoholic beverages, non-sales, all types, to Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a post-wedding tented reception to be held on Saturday, September 16th, from 5:30 to 11:00 at 15 Newton Street. And there's a whole bunch of these. Question of granting four temporary wine and malt beverage alcoholic sales licenses. The Olive Connection for a four-session wine class to be held at 1426 Beacon Street on the following dates, from 6:30 to 8:30, Monday, September 11th, Monday, September 18th, Monday, September 25th, and Monday, October 2nd. I'll also move that we grant two temporary wine, malt, alcoholic beverage sales licenses. The Olive Connection at 1426 Beacon Street for events as follows. For a paella event to be held on Wednesday, September 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00. I think I want to go to that one. For a cooking demo to be held on Tuesday, September 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00. And lastly, I'll grant, I'll move that we grant a temporary all kinds of alcoholic beverage license to Hellenic Association of Boston Doing Businesses, Enunciation, Greek Orthodox Cathedral of New England for a three-day Greek festival to be held on September 15th, Friday, from 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM. The 16th, Saturday, from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And the 17th, which is a Sunday, from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM at 162 Goddard Avenue. So all those in favor of all those temporary licenses?
Let me say that I've reviewed the paperwork both over the weekend and now. It all appears to be in order, and the police department sees no reason to deny the licenses.
Thank you for helping me.
You're welcome, and I will vote aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
I vote aye, and I hope you have a lot of fun.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to our main calendar. So the first item is the question of appointing 10 probationary firefighters. Chief Ward, you're going to have to help me with some pronunciation here.
No, I was coming up to ask if the chairman would be so kind as to read the names tonight, since I did not do a good job the last time.
What, you think I did a better one?
But I am pleased to inform you that all 10 candidates that you offered conditional offers to have passed their physical and psychological exams, as well as a physical ability test that was administered by the state. And I respectfully request that you offer all 10 of these positions of I shouldn't have been listening to you earlier. Probationary firefighters.
Now you're going to force me to read it?
It's no sense of both of us reading it.
Okay, guys.
Do you need help?
Okay, so Alan Hunt? Okay. Michael Commander? Okay, this is
Stephen Hatt.
Tell, how do you pronounce it? Yes. Stephen Hatt. David Leangas Gaeda? Close. Thomas Harrington? Okay. Roy Hopkins? William Smith? Okay. Kevin Camille? Brian Pender? And Gary Chin? Okay, welcome to you all, and good luck at the academy. And I hope we'll see you all back here in
10 weeks.
10 weeks. In uniform to be pinned, right?
Right.
Okay. So with that said, I will move that we offer contingent, conditional employment. Oh, no, wrong one. I'll move that we appoint the following 10 candidates as probationary firefighters. And we already said the names. The easy way out. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Welcome aboard. And we have one more.
As you know, on August 8th, I requested that we hire five additional firefighters. Since that time, we were contacted by former firefighter Lance Gaines, who was interested in returning to the Brookline Fire Department. Mr. Gaines worked for us for nine years, over nine years, just a little under 10, before leaving to pursue other career activities. He's been gone four and a half years, and he would like to come back as a Brookline firefighter, and I would love to have him. I'm asking you to give him a conditional offer of employment tonight.
Okay. So I'll move that we offer conditional employment to Lance Gaines for a position as firefighter. Oh, there he is. Okay. Really, welcome back.
He's a lot of
We have to vote! All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back. Okay. So the next item is Finance Department Personnel. It's a question of filling the position of buyer in the purchasing division. Good to face on.
Austin Faison, Assistant Town Administrator. Dave Jenikakis can't be with us tonight. He is actually on vacation, and our
You mean, he didn't want to come back from vacation just for this?
He did not want to come back from Greece, I think, unfortunately. And the finance director, Gina Franconi, is actually preoccupied with the advisory committee tonight. So I'm helping them out with this. Arlen Zynga
So you got the short
I'm always here, so this is easy. So Arlen, our current buyer in the purchasing department, is moving on. She got a great opportunity in Milton to kind of move up and be closer to home. And so we're going to miss her. But this job is, has been open recently. She moved into that job about a year ago. And then hopefully, we can cast wide net and get another good person into this position and keep supporting Dave, because they do a lot of great work in that division.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I see none, so
Actually, I have one.
Go for it.
Do we, do we have any indication from the last round that happened last year that we got a good pool of candidates? Are we expecting a lot of interest?
We actually hired one of the other candidates for another position within the purchasing division. So we did have a good group. Not to say that we're going to get another great group right now, but we hope that we do. And some of the different types of recruiting that our HR department has been doing has been giving us some diverse applicant pools lately.
Excellent.
Hopefully, that will prove the case this time as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'll move that we do what? That we authorize the That we authorize the filling of the buyer vacancy in the purchasing division in the finance department. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have a bunch of board and commission interviews. And first up is the Advisory Council on Public Health. And Dr. Schlaff. Hi.
Hi.
So tell us, you've been on the board, you've been on the commission for a while. Tell us what's going on.
I think it's been four years. It might have actually been six. I'm not even sure at this point.
See how time flies when you're having fun?
Time flies. The big news is having Dr. Jett, having a new director for the department, and I was privileged to be part of that process. And so, you know, as an advisory council, we're still getting to know him and him us. We're advisory, we don't make the decisions, so it's very much up to his discretion how we get used, and we're learning that together. What is new, I'm really excited about, is some of his ideas about doing a comprehensive needs assessment of the health status of Brookline. And also, and this really goes with what is sort of out there in the public health blogosphere, is really making a more engaged health department, where more people in the community actually know what the health department does, why it's there. And so I look forward to sort of talking through how we can help him do that. Just the other big thing that's new is marijuana. And so we're gonna be working on that a lot in the next couple of years.
Right, yeah. That's gonna be quite an effort.
High life of our activities.
Yeah, right. Under the current law, we can have up to, what, five recreational outlets in town? So we're going to be challenged as to, you know, whether we want to go up that high, and to not allow that would require a referendum. And then, where in town should they go? So there's going to be a zoning piece. And then, what regulatory controls that are within our purview do we want to exercise? We've taken a very, a real strong, I think, leadership role in the regulation of medical marijuana. Really, Dr. Balsam, you know, was very active in this area, very involved. And I know the host agreement that we've entered into with NEDA, you know, I've been involved in providing it to other municipalities to use as a model. I know I gave it to Boston, and there was one other community who asked for it. So it's-- So what are some of the other things, areas of interest that you might have, that you want to take the council?
Mine personally, well, in addition to my public health work, my clinical work is in addiction, so I'm obviously very interested in the marijuana, but also in opiates. And I think we've been fortunate that we don't necessarily, we don't have the worst problem in the Commonwealth by any means, but want to keep it that way. I also, I just have an abiding interest in the things in public health that are common and have been sustained for decades, and therefore nobody pays any attention to, but the things that we die of in this community are heart disease, and cancer, and stroke, and diabetes, same as every place else in the country. And making sure that we stay in leadership roles in terms of coming up with innovative ways, you know, within the possibilities of what a local government can do to protect the population in those areas. And then to just sustain our efforts to protect against infectious disease, which again, most of the news is good, but it doesn't take too much for there to be an outbreak in a restaurant, or an epidemic from, you know, not enough vaccinations going on in the schools. So lots of things to pay attention to.
So, you know, the recreational marijuana initiative is upon us. You know, what public health issues do you anticipate, or do you expect that we'll have to be dealing with as that becomes act, or as we roll that out?
Right. It's a fair question, because there's lots of opinion and lots of ideology. There's not necessarily a lot of public health science in what we have to do around marijuana. But I think--
Well, if it's not a lot of science, maybe that's one of the things we have to do.
We have to do.
Is develop the science.
We do have to do that science. But I do think that probably the critical thing in terms of the regulations, what we can do locally, is to make it difficult for teens to get it, you know? At least, if not a lot more difficult than it is for them to get tobacco and alcohol. Because that's the population for whom there's a significant risk in terms of brain development and a risk of addiction. About 10% of people who use marijuana get addicted, and that way it's sort of similar to alcohol. Most people can use it and not have a problem, but there's a significant subpopulation that does get in trouble. So we have to figure out how to protect those people, get them treatment. And then I think we have to worry about intoxicated driving. You know, it's not as easy to, with alcohol, you can do a breathalyzer test to know if somebody's got alcohol in their system. We don't have a biomarker for marijuana, so we're gonna have to figure out clever ways of knowing whether somebody is impaired.
The, you say that we're not the worst in the state with respect to opioid addiction.
Yeah.
But we do have some level of addiction.
Yes.
Do you have a sense of, you know, what level that is, and who it impacts, and, you know, where it comes from, or, you know, what are the sources of this?
You know, because the numbers are low, I don't have them in my head or at my fingertips. It's, you know, certainly, use and abuse is probably in the 2% or 3% range, or even less than that. I think the places, you know, it's certainly, prescription opioids are used recreationally in high school kids. Those numbers are actually-- drug use among junior high school and high school kids in Brookline's been going down, while rates of anxiety and depression have been going up. So that's another public health issue we have to pay attention to. But again, I think a lot of what happens in Brookline, you're going to largely middle-class and upper-middle-class community, is it gets from grandparents and parents, medicine cabinets into parties, and kids experiment, and then a few of them get into big trouble with it. It's generally an epidemic of young adults. Maybe start, who start experimenting in teens, and then get into serious trouble, late teens or early twenties.
Sure.
You mentioned that the risk to adolescents is in the area of brain development.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, at to what age do you see that extending? Because, you know, so if somebody becomes from 19 to 20, they're no longer at risk? Or, I think maybe it's higher than--
Right. So what we know about brain development is, you know, the brain remains fairly plastic and doesn't really set into sort of fold, as fully developed until about, until the mid-20s, 25 or thereabouts. So presumably, when you're using psychoactive substances, any time up until then, there's some risk that could affect permanent development. The younger you are, the more the brain's changing, and the greater the risk is. So I suspect that somebody who initiated marijuana use 18 or 20 might still have some effects that are permanent as a result, but they probably, they'd be less likely to be measurable and problematic as somebody who starts in early teens. That's not to dismiss it, but just to--
Can I ask--
Yeah.
I mean, it seems intuitive that, given, you know, the way the brain develops over time, that any psychoactive substance is gonna affect its development.
Yeah.
Intuitive. Do we have any science to back that up?
Well, we certainly do with the drugs that are more universally addictive, like opiates.
Okay, but what about marijuana?
But with marijuana, you know, there might be studies out there, you know, even though I do addiction, it's my clinical work. Again, as a physician, you tend to focus more on opioids and cocaine, so I don't know all the literature on marijuana. There might be things out there--
One more time.
Yeah.
And we don't, we don't know about marijuana, we know about opioids.
Yeah.
And we're making this sort of leap from opioids to marijuana in terms of the impact.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, while, you know, that's intuitive, and maybe we, you know, should act as if there is a connection, I think that there's a need to really back that up with some real science.
Yeah.
Because, you know, back in the old days, you know, the Reefer Madness days, a lot of things that were said about marijuana, they were just lies.
That's true.
And that induced kids to experiment when they otherwise wouldn't. So I'd like to make sure that we don't go down that path again.
Yeah. So the biology of marijuana and opiate are very, very different, and so it is hard to extrapolate one to the other. You know, when I said about the science and brain development, I don't know much in literature about the biology of it. There certainly is behavioral evidence that the younger you are, at which age you start with marijuana, the more likely you are to have problems, both in terms of misuse, overuse, and problems in terms of adult functioning, and social roles, and in employment. The presumption is because there are permanent brain changes that happen as a result of taking it during development. That's the science that I don't know, if that, the behavioral stuff that we know happens as a result of early use. There's also, again, most teens who experiment with marijuana and use it in small amounts probably will have no permanent measurable effects on either their brain or on their functioning as adults. So I do think we, you know, have to be careful of Reefer Madness Syndrome and not overreact.
I want to continue the issue of health, deleterious health effects, and zero in on the smoking part. Now, I'm assuming that while marijuana doesn't, may not have the same level of nicotine and tar and those noxious substances that you get when you smoke a cigarette. I mean, I remember Alan Balsam once saying to me, whatever you put in your lungs, except for air, is probably not a good thing.
Right.
So I'm wondering what your thoughts about that are.
Well, the good news is that not many people smoke 20 or 40 joints a day, right? So that, I think that's the main reason why there's big differences in the, in the health effects, that with tobacco, the harm done to the lungs is not from the nicotine, it's from the tars and the 300 substances that result from burning plant material. And you're burning plant material and inhaling it in your lungs, there's probably 300 chemicals in marijuana, at least some of which are going to destroy lung tissue over time. Whether they're carcinogenic or not, probably, and I don't think we know, but almost certainly would destroy lung tissue. But again, you know, so again, it's a, it's a dose response. So if somebody who's smoking, even a heavy smoker marijuana might be smoking two or three joints a day, that's not 20--
So it's significant concerns, health concerns, about the legalization, not only because of what it does to your brain, or what it can do to you in terms of your functioning when you're driving a car, or whatever, but also your health down the road.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Fascinating discussion.
Always.
Thank you. I think we're doing appointments tonight, so you'll hear.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Mar, welcome. You're re-upping.
Yes, 12 years. I can't get enough of it.
That's what we like to hear.
Yeah. There's a learning curve, so.
So tell us your interests and why you want to continue, and--
So I'm a nurse practitioner. I've worked with the homeless, and I'm now working with people with major mental illness. So I'm always interested in disparities in healthcare. And Dr. Balsam volunteered me about nine years ago to join the Climate Action Committee, which I knew nothing about, but there's a huge intersection of climate change and health. And I've learned a lot about it in these nine years. So I have worked with Climate Week with an effort to get our residents in Brookline involved in decreasing their greenhouse gas emissions. And to me, the really exciting part about that, in terms of public health, is that everything that you do to decrease your greenhouse gas emissions also helps you be healthier and live a longer life. Because you're walking or biking more, you are eating lower in the food chain, more plants, which is really becoming more and more evident, that it really does increase longevity and health. And you also, you know, maybe looking more at community, and sharing, and joining together, and solving problems together, which is a huge factor in longevity and health. So I think Climate Week, you know, we keep on trying to engage as many citizens as we can in this double effort of improving their health and improving the health of the planet.
I want to thank you for your service on this Climate Action Committee.
Thank you, Nancy.
It's been a pleasure to have you there and to hear your views on how these things do intersect. And I'm wondering how you have seen the, you know, what, the green initiative, the Brookline Community Aggregation, and what we can do to, maybe we should, should we include a health message in our encouraging people to, to adopt the 25 or 100% options? And what would that message look like?
You know, I think people really want to do something, and I think what's staggering to people is that it's such a huge problem, and they feel so helpless to do something, that now we're, we really have the opportunity in Brookline to say, now we can really make a huge difference in green, in our greenhouse gas emissions by whoever can afford to go up to 100% renewables especially to do that. And I think that if we can connect that with conservation, so that even though you're paying 13 cents per kilowatt hour, you can cut back on your electric use, and you may be even paying less for electricity with that, I think that could be a really hopeful message for the community, and a really good way for people to do not too much, you know, not, it's not too difficult, and it can make a, we can make a huge difference, I think. Is that, and I think to put in, you know, any kind of health messages, that this is also gonna be good for our health and our family's health, I would, I would love to work on that with you.
Certainly, I'm sure the people in Houston feel that way this past week.
Yes.
And who knows, you know, what else is happening, but yes, thank you.
Selectman Green.
So I've spent a number of days riding my bicycle on vacation, on smooth bicycle paths dedicated to bicyclists and walkers, breathing pristine air. Riding a bike in Brookline is not like that.
I'm a bike commuter. I bike to Somerville and Cambridge.
Okay, so my question is, and I think this is under jurisdiction of Council on Public Health--
I don't know.
If it's not just--
Climate changes.
So, I mean, is there, is there a sort of educational role that you can play in terms of, you know, some of the issues with bike riding on public highways, which, in my experience, is dangerous, maybe you're not a good bicyclist, as well as, you know, the issues of, you know, when you're biking, you're breathing in noxious fumes from, you know, the cars and the general bad air in the environment. And I'm not suggesting that we, you know, discourage biking, that's not it. But I was wondering if there's some issues for, if there's some public health issues that need to be at least addressed through education, or, I don't know, you tell me.
Yeah, I mean, bike riding is really good for your health, but also we need to make it safer. And I know that some towns, Boston and Cambridge, have reduced the speed limit for every road in the town to 25 miles per hour. Because speed in, car speed is the main factor of creating injury. So if you get hit, if you're in a bike and you get hit at a car going 10 to 25 miles per hour, you could be injured. But if that car's going 40 miles per hour, the chances that you won't survive it are, you know, something like 90%. So I would say the first thing is to really look at how fast cars are going in Brookline. You know, and that, that has also implications for our school kids, you know, for parents to feel safe, for kids to walk to school, and to bike to school. So speed would be the one thing. We've often thought about having part of driver's ed be also bicycle awareness and safety, and starting, you know, kids who are just driving-- ed be also bicycle awareness and safety and starting, you know, kids who are just driving early to do that. Even with something as simple as they call the Dutch, I think, opening of the door, that you use this hand to open the door so that you're looking behind you to see any bikers coming through. And a couple of times in Climate Week, we thought of having like a big area where we can have kids bring their bikes and learn safe biking, younger kids, you know, how to turn, how to signal, and that kind of thing. But I know the Bicycle Advisory Committee in Brookline is really active with trying to make it a safer way for people to get around. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, sort of.
And as far as, as far as the fumes, I know, I, because I go across the BU Bridge every day and I, I do think of that, but I think if you're weighing risks and benefits, just the exercise is good and, you know, probably outweighs anything that you're breathing in, that we're all breathing in because of cars. But of course, if we're all on bikes, there'll be less noxious fumes to breathe in. So I think the more people we can get on bikes, the cleaner our air and the safer it'll be.
So is there a role for the Public Health, or Council on Public Health in that regard, in, in any of these things?
Most definitely, most definitely. And safety is, is definitely one of the major focuses of public health. And I think transportation safety is. And I think air quality, like, it's, in Brookline, we do really well with most diseases, but for some reason, we have a really high, a higher incidence of asthma than the rest of the state. So I think to look at our air quality is important and definitely something that public health should be involved in.
Okay.
Homeless mental health is an issue that is very important to me. What do you think we could be doing better in, as a community in Brookline regarding that issue?
Yeah, I think that one of the major issues is just the lack of public health, of psychiatric care. And I think that also the psychiatric care is centered in the hospitals. But when people who really need it are often experiencing paranoia or skepticism about, or fearfulness about providers and care and going into a hospital where they may have had bad experiences. So I feel like when we do increase our mental health forces, that it's really important to get people out in the community. And I know that we have Brookline Mental Health, which I think is really one of the most progressive and wonderful community mental health centers in any community. But to just keep on getting people out into the community, into the schools, into the senior centers, where people who are suffering from mental health often are suffering on their own.
Thank you.
And, yeah.
Okay, anything else? I think, yep. The previous speaker mentioned issue of anxiety among, I think teens primarily in Brookline. Is that, you have any thoughts on, I understand that that is a serious concern here in town.
Serious concern, you know, in our whole country. And I just read an article in The Atlantic that was very interesting, looking at this really younger generation that has always had cell phones. And there were some graphs, I, I really recommend you to look at it, of when the cellphone came and then looking at rates of depression, anxiety, not going out with friends, you know, all these things going sort of down with the question of what is social media, what effect is social media having on young kids, especially the young kids that have only known it, you know, only known life with a cellphone. Sleep was going down, health was going down. So I think that people are really starting to look at that seriously and to look at what role is social media having in that effect of making people more lonely. But I really recommend that article. It's very informative.
So we'll be making appointments tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next up is Casey. Come join the party. Brookline Commission for Women, Casey Hatchett.
Good evening.
So what have you been up to?
What have you been up to? Well, I'm approaching, I think, my 13th year as chair or co-chair on the Women's Commission. It's been a really wonderful experience for me, working with a really spectacular group of volunteer commissioners, doing some great programs in the community. We have our signature programs that many of you I know are aware of, our annual Women Who Inspires event and our children's clothing drive and our Dress for Success clothing drive that we, you know, maintain every year and somehow every year they seem to get even more successful. We're also looking to do some additional programming, some new programming in the areas of domestic violence, youth dating, safety, and more ways to kind of bring women together and promote and support women in the community.
Okay. Wow.
I will say one thing, I, I love the event, the Woman of the Year event. And I've been privileged to know a couple of youngsters who have participated in that. And the essays are fantastic. The, you know, the camaraderie, the focus on strong and effective women is fantastic. It's really, it's a great event and I always look forward to it every year.
Thank you, I do too. It's a really powerful evening.
Selectman Franco.
I want to compliment you for your work you've done in the past, particularly around the Jennifer A. Lynch Committee.
Thank you.
Something that we've sort of talked about now, I guess it was four or five months ago, was reaching out to maybe some businesses in town to raise awareness about domestic violence, particularly on my mind is next month is Domestic Violence Month. So wondering maybe if you could expand a little bit on the plans for raising more awareness about domestic violence in Brookline and sort of preview maybe some other ideas that maybe aren't in the near term, but, but longer, with a longer trajectory.
Sure. I know we've communicated a few times via email as well as with Christian Yelfalk, my co-chair, around doing some education with maybe some of our bars and restaurants around like the dangers of like maybe people who are on a date and feel that they're in an unsafe situation. And we're trying to determine if the, the Domestic Violence Roundtable was doing a similar program where they were going to be posting kind of in bathroom stalls like Awareness Wares Campaign. So we didn't want to, you know, kind of do the same type of project maybe and kind of maybe scare off some of our business owners being approached by too many people. What we were thinking of doing, I know Pat Norling, who's a very dear friend of mine is, and also chair and founder of the Jennifer A. Lynch Committee, is approaching retirement. And so as an honor to her, we were hoping to do a program coordinating with the Teen Center, Women's Commission, Jennifer A. Lynch, and many of our community partners to host the showing of Escalation, which is a documentary about a woman who was a college girl who was killed by her boyfriend. And the video, if you haven't seen it, really explores how these relationships can escalate. And most of it was occurring like over, you know, social media, over text messaging and resulted in, resulted in her death. And it's a really wonderful and very powerful film. It's just over an hour long and we've been communicating with the Teen Center about hosting a showing of that and also hosting it as kind of like an honor to Patty and the work that she's done in the community. She did speak at the high school this past spring along with Joreen Gallagher and Julie McDonald, I think our domestic violence advocates at the police department, to bring this program to parents and older high school students. And I do think it's an important message for our general community to see. Text messaging is the way of our world now and I think that understanding for parents, like what they need to be aware of with their, with their youngsters is really important and even beyond escalation. And hopefully more to follow about that event coming up in October, November, is having some programming to educate parents about social media and platforms, electronic platforms that their kids are communicating on and to be a little bit more tech savvy and aware of what some of the dangers are, ways to, you know, track those cell phones, not, you know, in a Big Brother way, but like, you know, if they went missing, like the Find My Phone app that, you know, the kids can locate you, you can locate them, and just to be aware of, you know, what is, what the internet and things like Snapchat and, you know, these online discussion groups look like for younger kids and the pressures that they may feel. And so just to be more aware of that, I feel like, you know, I have four kids myself and three of them now are, have their own cell phones and, you know, I often feel being somewhat tech savvy that I'm not quite sure that I would know everything that they're being exposed to on the internet. And so I think that's a lot of, an area where our town and certainly the Women's Commission and the Domestic Violence Roundtable and the Jennifer Lynch can do some, do some great work going forward.
Okay. Any other questions? I think we're doing appointments tonight, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see Jen, so we'll skip over to Cliff.
She just ran to the ladies' room because she wiped her eye after, she was cutting some peppers earlier and I think got it in her eye and so she ran out just as you.
Okay, so we'll do Cliff and if Jen comes back. Mr. Brown, what's going on? Welcome back.
Football season's starting, how's that?
So you're re-upping.
I guess so. I was surprised when I got the notice this summer because it, it's, it's hard to believe that it was three years ago that I was standing up here trying to, you know, tell the selectman at that point what it was I had done that, you know, suggested I should be, be doing it again. But it's, it's been an interesting three years, actually. That was right before the override study committee got started and, you know, since that time, you know, there's been a lot of activity in the town in terms of development. There's been a lot of activity in terms of strategic thinking and strategic planning, that type of activity is ongoing. And, you know, EDAB plays an important part in, in all those areas. So it's, it's when you look back and you start thinking about what's actually transpired that you realize that, you know, you've actually been productive or someone has been productive.
Yeah, EDAB, I think, has been a very effective group. We've always, members have volunteered for various other, other kind of offshoots of EDAB. I know you're on advisory, but that, that's not EDAB. What's some of the...
So, I mean, let me just, you know, agree with what you said. I mean, most of the folks on EDAB have an architectural background or a legal background and, or a planning background and they're able to bring those capabilities to specific developments as they're going through the, the process in town. And it's actually fascinating to watch and to be part of, although, you know, frankly, I'm more on the periphery of those types of things because that's not my specific background. My background is more real estate and real estate finance. But I, I do think that one of the things that has been beneficial to the folks on EDAB has been actually to have someone who is on the advisory committee. In not so much to be a formal liaison, but, but to bring back to that group information about perspectives and certain activities that frankly, the, the group would otherwise be insulated from. And I, I do think that there's, you know, a real positive to that. And, you know, I've been on, the committees that I've been on have been less building specific, but they've been things like the 111 Cypress Committee, the Hancock Village eminent domain committee, the, the parking committee. And while some of those things were either appointed by the moderator or things where the folks on advisory, my, my background suggested I be there, the work that EDAB does actually, you know, touched each one of those situations. And so the cross-fertilization, I think, has been pretty good, so.
You brought up the beginning of football season. So let me seize that metaphor and try and sort of stick my question into it. So this is the time when we're all sort of thinking about what the world is going to look like in 16 or 20 weeks. Who's the, who's going to win the Super Bowl? What team looks good, what team looks bad? For the past few years, a number of us on this board and people who, for whatever reason, derive some pleasure trying to forecast what economic development is going to look like years in the future, had been wondering what the pipeline of things that EDAB is going to look like is going to be. We've, we've sort of seen a bunch of big projects come forward, Cleveland Circle, Brookline Place, River Road, you know, the list goes on. And right as we sort of wonder what the future holds, some other big project comes forward. So we were having this conversation, I guess, a year ago, six months ago, and then the Holiday Inn came forward, Waldo Durgan sort of resurfaced. Do you think we're going to be saved by another big project or are we going to have to sort of figure out what EDAB is going to tackle next?
Well, so I, I think it's a really interesting question and one that, I think a few years ago, the conversation at EDAB or certainly among some of us was very much that the town is reactive. And so things happen in the town, you know, has been traditionally, not so much behind the eight ball, but behind the curve. And, and that may be normal for municipal governments. It, it's hard to get out there, particularly with the, the style of government that we have. But I, I do think that it was that realization that led to the establishment of the Strategic Asset Plan and, you know, led to the hiring of someone in the planning department for long-term planning. I mean, you, the town needs to be proactive in order to take more control of its own destiny. You're, we're always going to be surprised by a project that none of us thought about. That's just going to happen. But to the extent that we are able to establish a better handle on what we have, what we need and where we want to go, then, you know, we can start to drive that process. I, that's a very hard task to accomplish, but if the town doesn't try to go there, then it's always going to be random. So that's, that's, I think, a, a, a big challenge for the town.
I have a question. Selectman Franco asked about new big projects that are on the horizon. I was wondering if you gave, have given any thought to new big concepts on the horizon? I mean, the obvious one is driverless cars, it's going to have a huge impact on, on us. I mean, are there other things that we should be thinking about or, I mean, are there ways in which we need to be thinking long-term that's different from just long-term planning?
You know, that's an excellent question. It's, I can't tell you that it's something I've spent a lot of time personally thinking about or actually chatting about with folks at EDAB. But, you know, one of the things that I do think that the town needs to try to get a better grasp on, and this is not just our town, but a lot of municipalities, is the future of, of retail and what it's going to mean for vitality of the historic commercial zones. And, you know, a lot of people complain in town about the fact that in Coolidge Corner, you know, it's banks and it's nail salons and it's this and it's that. But at the same time, we're all guilty of buying on Amazon, you know, which I, I'm as guilty as the next person because it's so easy and, you know, what have you. But that directly impacts the vitality of the commercial areas. It's a very, you know, it's a really vicious circle. I think that there needs to be much broader thought, you know, about what that means for community going forward. I don't have an answer to that. I think that's a, that's a big challenge. I don't think something like driverless cars per se, I think it's a technological issue that is fascinating. I think artificial intelligence is really going to be fascinating, but I, I'm not sure how that works necessarily into our own... I, I'm not sure how that works necessarily into our own, um, day-to-day management of, of government.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Jen? Well, I, I'm glad to hear that, you know, it's, it's nothing that I did.
No, I don't think that hot peppers are a major public health issue, but I talked to Dr. Schlaf and I think we've got it covered now.
They are good for you.
Not for your eyes, though.
I, I have had the pleasure of doing that, so...
At just the right moment.
So tell us, uh, about what's going on in the Women's Commission, uh, from your perspective.
Well, first off, thank you for having me and, um, you guys ask hard questions. About this. So the Women's Commission, I feel so lucky to be part of this and I have to thank Casey and Chris because they, um, to me, the Women's Commission is, it's a pretty eclectic, um, heterogeneous group of women. And now I think we have one male, I don't know if he's a member, but he attends all our meetings, um, in terms of professions, where people are in age in life and responsibilities in life and family status. And I think what that allows us to do is really have a lot of perspective in terms of the programs that we plan. And I feel personally like, you know, there are some times activities in our town can be acrimonious and, you know, I'm sure that doesn't affect you.
We've had a few of those.
We haven't noticed.
The Women's Commission, I feel like is the exception to that. I mean, I feel as if when we think about what we want to accomplish each year, there's a lot of consistency, but it, I was thinking about it with respect to the Public Health, um, Commission. You know, it's a lot of the same social determinants of health that affect the population at large that we think about in the population of women and women and children. So the clothing drive, the, um, the, uh, I'm into the clothing drive, so I'll, I'll speak about that. Um, but also the work that we do reaching into the schools, the program where we talk about childcare options. Um, and, you know, our, I think that not only is it sort of the explicit program, so we kind of every July plot out what our activities for the year are going to be. And they include the, um, Women Who Inspire, they include two drives, one for children's clothing, and this year in partnership with Dress for Success, it's going to be a Women's Workplace Coat Drive because that's really what their needs are. And one of the things I like to think about is how can we be sort of community partners? So we're not sort of having to invent things ourselves. Um, not, I don't think we invent things ourselves, but like what meets a really obvious need. I think one of the benefits of the committee, um, within the membership is that Casey, in her role with the Police Department and Grace Watson in her role with the Housing and Chris with the, um, the Department of Public Health, all have their, sort of, have a sense of the pulse of what the needs are in the community. So when we're doing, uh, the drives, for example, we're not just doing them sort of in a generic way, but we know families specifically who have particular needs. And so we can vary individually, you know, not sort of think in a, you know, sort of generic, everyone must need this, but what are some individual families whose lives we can really change in an immediate way? And I feel like that is one of kind of the beauties of being in a small town, is that we, you know, we work closely with the Food Pantry, with the Housing Commission, with everything Casey does, which is everything. And, um, and so it's, um, it feels like an impactful and really positive, um, commission to be part of. As I think about kind of going ahead, particularly sitting here, listening to the Public Health Commission, I think, how can we even more effectively sort of link up with it, other commissions that have similar, um, activities? I mean, I feel as if some of the issues Tony was talking about, I'm thinking, um, around the marijuana, you know, sort of what do we know about marijuana and impact on developing brains? Like that's an issue that everyone cares about, but it's an issue that women and mothers care about a lot. We've had, the BPEN group at the high school has brought in a speaker about that. How do we connect them? How do we connect us? Sort of co-sponsoring potentially programs? Because I think we reach different audiences and have different draws.
So I picked up the Boston Globe this morning and, uh, front page below the fold is an article about an initiative that the city of Boston has been leading, uh, salary, salary negotiation workshops for women. And, um, it's a program I was aware of, very interesting. Uh, but what really stuck with me is, um, all the people who were profiled in the article were women who were in their twenties and thirties. Not a group that you frequently see plugged in with city government, uh, or quoted in the Boston Globe. Uh, I know that, um, there's been one of these workshops, I think sponsored by the, uh, Association of University Women in Brookline. Um, but, uh, part question, part comment, I think it's a great thing, particularly, um, in light of, uh, the small, um, uh, study sample size that was reported on this morning. Uh, something to continue to do in Brookline, maybe not through that workshop again, but maybe coming at it from a different angle. Um, wondering what your thoughts are, if you think, um, that's an area where the Women's Commission could continue to play a role or, uh, if there were sort of tangential issues that you might want to focus on.
I read that too. Just a victory in itself. I read so much. You know, it's so interesting. When I think about that, I think about the same challenge we have with Get Out the Vote, that this is a prohibitively expensive place to live, that people in their twenties, you know, to thirty, it's very hard to afford to own. So there's more transience. We have a hard time getting people who rent to vote in our local elections, you know, in our May elections. And it makes me think, how effective are we at reaching that same population with the kinds of programs that might engage people in the government? Because the programs really speak to their needs. We have one of the, I'm thinking, is it just one of the members of our commission is, I think, I would say she's under thirty. She would say I'm over thirty. And, um, you know, I think about her work and life and how she fits this in. And I've never said to her, how do we reach more of you? You know, I, I, we listen, she has really good ideas, but I've never thought, how do we make sure we're not just thinking about, um, you know, evaluating childcare options? That's a different demographic. Also, you know, would benefit from that negotiation workshop, but not exactly the same group. And I think it's just, you know, it's an interesting question for us as a town overall. How do we make sure we're reaching lots of different groups within our town? And, um, I think it's a really good idea and it's a very different workshop for people early in their career, mid-career, you know. So we have a meeting tomorrow night. We'll add it to the list.
Salkman Green?
Yeah, following up on that, I mean, not just, it seems to me that it'd be useful not just to reach out and, uh, engage more young people. Uh, and that's very important, but maybe the next step is to get them engaged in town, uh, in a way that will make them more, um, connected to the town and, and, you know, more likely to stay and provide long-term leadership for the town, uh, to replace us, except for Heather. Old folks in town.
What about me?
See, over thirty. Just say over thirty. Um, you know, it's interesting, like I, I feel as if for any of these, all of us started with some hook, you know, some initial town activity that engaged us, that got us more engaged, you know, whether it's, you know, some, whatever the point of entry. So for us, if there's a program that's engaging to younger women, that's a point of entry and that ideally draws them in more broadly. I mean, I think it's not necessarily a Women's Commission issue, but I think the prohibitive price of living here makes it hard for people to think about staying indefinitely, you know, and that's an economic issue. If, you know, a lot of people live when they're younger in, at a rental rate that isn't sort of a sustainable, you know, they don't have the down payment to turn that into what a mortgage would be. And it's a million dollars to get a condo in Brookline. Like it's, so I worry about, you know, what's the pipeline in that sense, um, for young people to be able to stay. So like we could do great programming, we could engage people and then at the point that they have to buy a place to live, we don't make it an easy place to buy.
Yeah, that, that's a problem. If we don't solve it, we're going downhill. So...
I mean, it's, it's bigger than the Women's Commission, but I think you're right. I, I think that we could, when we plan our programs, we think about a lot of, you know, we sort of have a matrix of all the different kinds of things we want to make sure we're addressing. But we don't always sort of say, what about, you know, what about age? Where are people at at this age? What needs could we meet? What at this age? And, um, you know, by the same token, we haven't done joint programming with the Senior Center that I know of, but that's like a whole other distinct population of women that, um, you know, there's excellent programming in town, but I'm sure that we could create linkages.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Sure. Okay, wow. What a great group of applicants. Um, okay, moving on in our agenda. We have a public, uh, a noise bylaw waiver public hearing. And this is a extension of two noise bylaw waivers. Uh, the first one is, um, Beacon Street Project and the second one is, uh, out on, uh, Boilston Street between seven twenty-eight and eight thirty. And I know the Beacon Street Project especially has been generating some complaints. Uh, we have a few in our packet. So, uh, what's going on over there?
Well, good evening, Board. Um, my name's John Barkus, National Grid. Um, this is Supervisor, go ahead, Nick.
Nick Heppey, National Grid.
Okay, Nick.
So, um, Nick is supervisor that oversees both of these projects. He was here, actually, at one of the other previous hearings we've had. Um, so we're back again, third time for Beacon Street. Hopefully, third time's a charm, but you probably don't see it that way. So, um, just to start, this extension would hopefully go till November fifteenth at the date of the moratorium. Um, I know I'm asking for another long extension, two and a half months out. We've been going on extensions on two months up to three months. When I first came in here back in, uh, February fourteenth, I asked for a three-month noise variance, hoping that we'd be able to finish the project. Came back in, in June, asked for a three-month, uh, two months with an extension of thir- three months. Uh, during that period, there has been some downtime. The first one was, it was approved to start March first, but we weren't actually able to start until March twenty-third, um, due to the weather and the permit restrictions we had from the town. And then this past month, we were shut down for three weeks, uh, due to the Mass Ave, um, I mean, sorry, the Mass DOT project on Comat Bridge. So right there alone is about, you know, six weeks of construction period that we weren't able to actually operate. And that's not taken into consideration, the, um, you know, weather. Sometimes we weren't able to actually get police details out there. So there have been other times that we've been restricted on work out there. Um, so that has been one of our obstacles that we've had. Other obstacles are just, just the work. It's slow. And we have some restrictions on there as well as jackhammering or also using the saws. And, um, sometimes the guys might, at two o'clock in the morning, run into a roadblock where they can't continue because they can't bring out the jackhammer, or they can't bring out the road saw. So we've had a lot of, um, obstacles in our way. And, um, we're just really hoping that, pretty much, I can almost, almost guarantee that if you approve this one up to November fifteenth, we will not be again, up here again this year for this project, you know?
How good is an almost guarantee?
It's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty good. Um, we've highlighted, like, what we had left on the project. Basically on Beacon Street, all the gas main has been installed. There's some few links that we have to connect, some valves, end caps, stuff like that. Um, some of the larger buildings there need some big services installed before you gas in the main that we've installed. Um, there's approximately fifteen services to be done after it's gassed in. You have, um, eight connections, you know, and those take some time. Those take two to three, you know, days from beginning to end. And then also you have to abandon the old gas main. And then we have to button everything up, make sure that it's safe until we're able to do the, uh, road restoration in the spring. So, um, we're pretty confident. I've spoken to Nick and the crew a few times now, uh, and we're pretty confident that we would hope to be able to wrap up by the end of October. But, you know, weather comes in or something freak happens, if we get a bad storm or something like that, um, we could be down another week. So we ask for November fifteenth on this one.
Am I understanding correctly that, uh, you've put in all the gas mains on Beacon Street? And does that mean there won't be any further jackhammering?
So there could be some further jackhammering going forward due to expansion of the whole services, abandonment, stuff like that. So there will be some jackhammering. Sometimes we have to jackhammer without knowing, okay. It'd be great if we could say, hey, we're going to put the pipe in from point A to point B. But what happens is point A to point B, there's an obstacle in our way and we have to offset it. Sometimes there might be concrete that we have to jackhammer. So we definitely will be jackhammering again during the time restriction and also saw cut. There's no...
So I, so I misunderstood you. You, you haven't put in the gas mains yet.
So the gas main is installed. Correct. So the gas, but there are some pieces that have to be put together. So you have a gas main going from point A to point B with eight connections, connecting side streets, larger services, et cetera. Those still have to be connected along the way. We can't just leave those not connected, otherwise people would be without gas. So there will be some...
It's a service line. They're separate.
Mostly ser- connections to the existing facility and the service lines. Correct.
So the, um, the restrictions we had, um, certainly slow you down, but, um, it had, it was no jackhammering after nine and then no saw cutting after ten.
Correct, with the start time at seven.
So we were getting complaints about, um, a lot, a lot of noise at like two in the morning. And was, was that you guys or the MBTA also have, has a project going on?
So... There's been an increase in activity in...
Come to the mic.
Sorry. There's been an increase in activity just in that general area, uh, one in particular being the MBTA. Uh, looks like they've been doing some form of maintenance on the tracks within the scope of our work. And there was a point where even I was out there, I think, uh, we, last week or week and a half ago, I was out there at the intersection of Beacon and Pleasant Street, but the MBTA was working at night with a vacuum truck at the intersection of Beacon and Winchester Street. So that area is primarily more residential than the Beacon at Pleasant Street, which is where we ran into some issues when we were working there. And we tried to accommodate the residents while we were working in that section. And I think we did so successfully, at least, once we were able to address the issues with the residents.
Also, I, I know recently it sounded like we got a couple of complaints in, and one of them definitely was due to the T construction. Um, but I, I was thinking of it the other day. I was like, why, why all of a sudden are we getting these complaints? There's a couple of things that came up where Mass DOT shut us down for three weeks. So during June, we're shut down for three weeks and all of a sudden, boom, we're back in there again. The climate has changed a little bit. I know for myself, my air conditioner is shut off at night and I open my windows. So there's a couple of things that might have factored into that. I was just thinking myself, that made sense to me that, geez, we're not there for three weeks. Temperatures changed, windows are open now at night. So it could be also due to that along with the MBTA. And I'm not putting all blame on MBTA. We definitely make some noise out there. We have the construction noise that we do make with the trucks and the equipment, the lights, you know. So I, I know we do make noise out there.
Um, this is always a tough issue because on the one hand, it's, you know, if you're the person who's, you're trying to sleep in your apartment and it's right down below you, it's really disturbing. On the other hand, I mean, you're doing something that has to be done. We've got to get new, you know, infrastructure there so that we don't have the dangerous situation of, uh, these gas leaks, one thing, uh, and, uh, further corrosion of the old cast iron pipes, which is what you're replacing. So I just hope you can get it done as expeditiously as possible so that fewer people, as few people as possible lose their sleep and we get a safer system. Um, and I, you know, obviously, I, I, you know, I think we have to approve this, but, you know, I urge you, please, get it done.
Thank you.
Um, this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak?
Yeah.
Come on up. Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is...
My name is Stephen Thaw. I live at 1390 Beacon Street.
We have a email from you.
You do have an email from me. You've had multiple correspondences from me, including through Twitter in the past.
And I'll apologize because I don't know what to do with those.
It's okay. Sometimes I don't either. I find it curious that so much of the noise is being generated apparently by the MBTA. I'm out there frequently at night. I'm a night owl. And a large percentage of the noise is not generated by the MBTA. It's generated by the National Grid project. And it's not just jackhammers and it's not just road saws. It's the large steel plates that are dragged along the road at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning as they're covering up the manholes. Often, that noise is louder than a jackhammer or a road saw. Those plates also sit on the road all day. They're actually sitting outside my apartment right now, on the road, people driving over them, just sitting there, along with construction equipment that's left there. I think it's, I understand this needs to be done. And as you saw in my email, I agree that this is a necessary project and we can't just leave it as it is. But the residents of that area have suffered greatly in our quality of life. And that's why I proposed in the email that I did, that it's time that the burden of this project be shifted more evenly amongst everybody in the area, which is why I propose that all construction to the west of Center Street be done during daylight hours and construction to the east of Center Street be done overnight to reduce the impact as that area is much less residential than the Center Street to Winchester Street section. Because we can sit here and say, get it done, get it done, get it done. Yes, they were shut down for three weeks. I would submit that this, that the BU Bridge project has been on the books for more than a year and that should have been accounted for the last time that this noise waiver was approved. But be that as it may, what's to stop us from being back in here on November 15th with, well, there was a weather delay again, they're just gonna have to suffer more. Well, this happened, they're just gonna have to suffer more. It's, you know, I find it curious, the person who was up here before saying, how can we engage more young people, more renters in the area, in town government? The first step is to not step all over us. And that's what it feels like. We're getting stepped all over because the prime, the people who live in that area along that stretch are primarily renters, like myself. I'm exactly the demographic that the woman who was just up here speaking was targeting. I'm 30 years old, I'm a young professional, my girlfriend is in the same category as me. We want to stay in Brookline. I don't want to stay in a community that doesn't want me. And that's what it feels like is being said with this project. Well, we have to get it done. Screw you. Pardon my bluntness. So I would encourage the board to consider the proposal that I put forth as a way to mitigate the need to get this done, but also to allow us to have a quality of life again because this has had a severe impact. And to just say, well, it's not too bad, let's just get it done, I think is lessening the impact and lessening the negative effects that it's had on us. And I wanted to come here tonight to, to personally tell you that this has been a real strain on us. And my apartment window doesn't even look straight out onto Beacon Street. I'm not one of the ones who's affected the most. There are ones who have it worse than I do. And I also usually go to sleep after all the construction is done because I'm a night owl. So this is coming for me, somebody who is less affected than most. So you can imagine how many others who have an apartment facing directly out onto Beacon Street, who may go to bed a lot earlier than I do, how they must feel about it. They're not here. I can't speak for them, but I can tell you, having spoken with some of them directly, I have friends who live in the complex next to me. We're, we're feeling the brunt of this and we want it to stop. So I appreciate you taking the time to hear me.
Okay. Thank you. So if I may address the concerns, you're absolutely correct. It's not all the MBTA. Recently, the MBTA started a project there. And again, we do have construction noise out there. We can't avoid the noise. If we go to the days, we were on days last year and that's why we're trying to finish this project at night. If we go to days, we're already looking at a situation now where we're gonna have to shut down a portion of Beacon Street and reroute the traffic for one of the connections that we have. And we're working with the Brookline Police Department on trying to figuring out a traffic plan for that night. If we were to do something like that during the day, again, I don't know how we're gonna go about that task. The project does need to continue. I know it's unfortunate that the residents at night do get the blunt of the noise. But during the daytime, with the heavy traffic on top of the heavy foot traffic, the project would most likely come to almost a standstill. You're more than 75% complete with this project. Last year, we did it during the summertime, during the days. We were very unsuccessful with that project. We've come to nights and we've almost completed the project with some delays in our way. I do understand that the residents are upset and we do not want to be up here asking for another extension, but we are. We don't see any other way of going forward with this project.
So what about this issue of dragging those heavy plates? Don't you have equipment that you could lift them up and...
So we do lift them up with equipment.
Equipment makes noise, right?
The equipment makes noise. What it is, is they're road plates and they, they weigh a couple of ton. They're steel plates, they're, you know, about an inch and a half thick to two inches thick. And they ting and tang and drag on the street and the roadways. There is an option that we can address with the crews that safely try to transport them down the road to the hole to cover them up. But the safest way to do that is to let the plates land with the equipment down by themselves. We don't want a employee or construction worker or anybody near them with their hands and their feet. People have been known to lose limbs and toes and fingers doing something like that. So what happens is, one, when they're dragging them down the street, we can address that to try not to drag them. And then, but when they're lowered, they do make a good bang noise. But we can address that to be a little more careful and a little more cautious with the noise. Again, I do understand that everybody's upset. We've been there a long time. But we're, we are on the home stretch of this project.
Are you working every single night, seven nights a week?
No, Sunday through Thursday. And Sunday through Thursday was the option so that way the, more of the foot traffic and the businesses and the restaurants weren't impacted. And also on the weekends, you know, the residents wouldn't be as much impacted on the weekends.
What about the point that was raised about doing work on the other side?
So the phase that you're coming into now, correct me if I'm wrong, is the gassing in phase. So what you have to do is you have to open up one end and you have to open up the other end and you have to open up a couple of the different openings. And you have to do a procedure of purging the gas into the system. So you have to have all the systems open to be able to let the gas flow through into the, and properly vent out. It'd be very difficult to try to do that process. It would, again, be almost impossible to be able to just have, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I don't know if you'd be able to even do that. I'll let, I'll let Nick answer. From my experience, I don't think you'd be able to.
So just for, kind of scope for everybody, our first connection is gonna be at the intersection of Beacon Street and Pleasant Street. And the connection that we're, the pipe that we're tying into is where we left off last summer at that intersection at Pleasant Street. Like John has said, mentioned, when we connect to that pipe at Pleasant Street, we have to evenly distribute the gas through our new main so that way we don't leave the possibility that any air pockets are trapped in new main. Because then that will then go into our existing system and could result in like a potential outage somewhere in another location. So what we have to do is, and this would be a necessity to be done probably at night, is we open up small holes prior to the connection, about three feet by three feet and at, down to our new gas main. And we basically have, we call purge points, where we get readings of the gas at the end to confirm that we have the appropriate percentage of gas and we're not gonna have an outage at another location or showing, showing that there's air traveling in the facility to another spot. So in that aspect of it, as far as from a noise situation, those are things that can likely be done ahead of time. Our, well, will be have to be done ahead of time, but at the connection at Center Street and on Winchester Street and Beacon Street just after Winchester Street, where our final connection will be, is something that I think we can probably talk to the town with, trying to get that done during the day because they are a little bit more off to the side and we would maybe only have to occupy half a lane and maybe the parking lane for the traffic. Primarily, at least on Beacon Street, up after Winchester. But on Winchester Street itself and Center Street itself, that is something I think that we can definitely entertain doing during the day as far as just digging and prepping. But for the sake of purging the gas into our new main, all that will be a process that has to be done at night because it all has to be done at once and prevent introducing any air pockets into the main.
How noisy is purging?
Not noisy at all, silent.
But you, but you'll get the noises from the plates being...
Correct. Yeah, the noise will be from opening the hole, pulling the plates, putting the plate back on. But as far as the purging process takes, I mean, it's a longer main, it's a longer run. But they're probably not gonna be at each purging point for more than 10, 15 minutes, I would say, as far as from a typical purging standpoint where we're at on our prototypical jobs.
What about the backfilling for those?
So the backfilling for those might even be an option that we can do during the day, if it's out of the way. And that's something that we can discuss with the town and the police department if necessary, where it's not gonna be as much of a hindrance. And then, so we would backfill those three by three holes, pave them, and then, like John was saying, we have to go then make lateral connections for those streets to the existing facility on those streets. So at Winchester Street, at Center Street, and then tying in at the end of Beacon Street, also Harvard and Pleasant. Those are lateral connections where we connect our new pipe to the existing facilities. And we would be, in, in playing a part in abandoning the run on Beacon Street.
So it sounds like there are, there are opportunities for pieces of the work to happen during the day? And you'll be in contact with Mr. Ditto and his staff to talk about that? I'm seeing yes.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, that would, anything we can try to do to try to alleviate noises or anything we can do ahead of time to prevent as much issues or conflict with the residents as possible, we will certainly try to aim for that and entertain anything we can try to do so long as, you know, it's not gonna provide a bigger issue with the town or the police department as far as the traffic buildup. The further that you, away you do get from Harvard Street, the easier that is. The connections at Harvard Street and Pleasant Street are more difficult connections and those are gonna be something that could pose a problem just because of the volume of traffic and the congestion of other utilities, so it's a difficult excavation.
Are there, are there any notifications that can be? If, if there's going to be a particularly difficult period of construction, can the town be notified and then we can post it on a website? Or can, can you have a website that can host that information so people will know?
Yep. So I could work with the town and their Twitter account.
Okay.
That seems to go pretty well. Like tonight's meeting was posted on there and it was, you know, I think that was well received. I honestly think that works better than sending out letters and stuff like that. We did do, on another project, we did door knockers, but we had a lot of support from those residents previously from starting that project. So we have a lot of renters in the area. The letters go to like the owners more so than the tenants. So I, I think we could put it on Twitter and also, you know, with the help from the town, we could put it on the website. The police department would also probably be willing to post it.
Right, yeah. I know they'll, the police department has a very active Twitter account.
Yeah.
Has traffic notifications and...
So I, I could work with them and we could, you know, whenever we think, and then that's almost instant, you know?
Right.
So we could do it the day before and then, you know, that day.
Okay, so let's talk. Unfortunately, I think, I personally think we have to grant the waiver. Hopefully, you can work with the town, see if, how much of the work can be offloaded during the day and...
Well, I think the great thing is that Nick was here to be able to answer some of the questions and also he's more familiar with the hands-on part of the project and what needs to be done. So, you know, he's, he's heard the voice and also we can definitely address that. More so than going through a third party of me than to him, you know, he can be right out there with them.
So my motion will be to approve the noise bylaw waiver with the same conditions we had last time, no jackhammering after nine, no saw cutting after 10. Should we do it in a similar manner through a date prior to November 15th with an option to approve an extension without a public hearing? Or do, just to extend?
No, this, this has to come back to us. I mean, this is the second extension and I, for one, am not gonna grant another extension on this. You know, it needs to be done, but part of this process isn't just to get the news out there that there's gonna be night work, it's to present some reasonable impediment to night work happening. And it doesn't appear to be doing that. So we can't just sort of throw up our hands and say, well, this is necessary work that needs to happen. There needs to be a reasonable expectation that you're gonna have to figure something else out.
So that said, what do you suggest?
Well, I think we've gotta grant this license. I'm just saying, this, this waiver, I'm just saying, we can't say, well, you know, the weather's been bad or there's been something else that's happened. We're just gonna administratively approve a further extension.
Okay, so...
Could I ask a question? Would it be better, I, I know you want to avoid Sunday through Thursday during the day because of traffic, people going to work, businesses, et cetera. I'm wondering whether over the weekend during the day, whether that's a better time for you to work and get, you know, work, we're getting this thing done because, you know, people are, more people are away or they're out for the day someplace else, you know, doing, you know, might be less disruptive. There's not as much traffic on the weekends. And, you know, it's one way to accelerate the timeframe. I really...
If, if we're permitted to work during the day or the weekends, we'll make all necessary arrangements to do so. I'm, I'm sure that Nick has asked me that a couple of times and we've steered away from, especially Sundays. But if the town, you know, if we speak to the town and we get approval for possibly working on a Saturday or Sunday for certain connections or certain services, because the upcoming services right now that we're gonna face, the residents, the businesses, the owners, they're gonna request that we come in, you know, at like 4:00 in the morning because they have to get their kitchen going. They're gonna request that we come in when the restaurant closes at 12:00 at night. So we're really hoping that the town is gonna grant us permission to do some of these sections during the day. these sections during the day or weekends. So that, that is an option that we're definitely open for.
What about bringing more crews in? I assume you've got one crew working on this now.
So we do. The problem with that is again, the construction area. If you put them in there, then you're going to really cause a lot of congestion. It's congested now with the one crew. If we put a second crew in there, which we possibly could look at, you're talking about possibly shutting down the roadway. That's what we're up against. I understand the frustration that you guys have, I do. And we, and I've said it before, we do not want to be out there anymore.
I mean, I don't want to put words in Mr. Thaw's mouth and if he disagrees with this, then he's free to get up and tell me I'm totally wrong. But there's two issues here. There's the, the volume of noise on any given night, and then there's the fact that this is extended for a prolonged period of time.
Correct.
I, for one, would be sort of willing to deal with a lot of noise for a one week span. If it stretches over four weeks, well, then the cumulative effect is almost worse. So sort of, if you can throw more resources at it, get it done. It's going to save you coming back to us and us, you know, having to wring our hands and try and figure out a solution where there may not be one that's really workable.
No, we should, we should definitely be able to do that again, you know, at the discretion of the safety of, of the roads and, you know, the police officers, the details, and the town when we're out there, you know? If something is unsafe, then we, we can't do it, but otherwise we will definitely throw more resources at it.
So maybe we're saying that we'll grant the waiver, but they should recognize that a subsequent waiver will not be given. And they should do whatever is necessary to ensure that one is not necessary. I, I think we're really sort of against the wall on this. Okay, you got that message, so-
I got the message. Nick, do you have the message?
I'm just curious what the notice said about this public hearing and whether it concerned the specific times. Did it mention, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday? I don't want to spring something on the neighborhood that they're not expecting.
The notice, on the notice that I have in front of me did not mention-
But do they need a noise bylaw waiver for Saturday or Sunday work? If it's between, you know, normal business hours, I don't think they do.
I think they do on Sunday if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Peter?
I think the waiver, this all seven days in a week, so can you grant this waiver for Sunday through Sunday?
Because we do have Sunday nights granted already for the nighttime. So we do have Sunday nights. We opted not to do the Fridays and Saturdays, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, due to the, you know, the businesses. We were trying to keep the roadways open as much as we could for the businesses, but we can definitely put resources out there.
Okay, so, so the motion will be approval of the extension through November 15th, no jackhammering after nine, no saw cutting after 10. Work with, work with the town to see if, to determine whether any work can be done during the day and-
Including Saturday and Sunday to accelerate the pace of the thing, so it, you know.
No, are you against that at all?
No, and I mean, like I kind of, with some of the excavations where some of these things are difficult and they do require that we have to bring in noisier equipment, sometimes it is more beneficial for us to work Saturday day or Sunday day as opposed to coming in at night. And we try to get as much done as we can during the day on the weekends, even if that means sacrificing coming in Sunday night and then instead coming in Monday night to perform whatever we need to do because that also, we do have to consider the residents because it's unfair to ask them also to kind of have, have us have crews there almost 24 hours a day, seven days a week, I think in some aspect to kind of just at least give them some, a break from it, you know? But if it is Sunday days, Saturday days-
I'm sure the break they would like is for you to finish.
Correct, I agree.
So.
You got it, Kate? Okay.
By the way, is this for Beacon and Boylston?
No, Beacon now. Yeah, so all those in favor of the motion, this is through November 15th with the no jackhammering after nine, saw cutting after 10 with an encouragement to do as much work during the day as possible, including Saturdays and Sundays.
Chairman, would you consider adding a condition about timely notification of the community, affected community?
And timely notification of the effective community via Twitter or other electronic means in conjunction with the town. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco. Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Boylston Street, we haven't had quite the level of complaints over there.
No, no, I don't believe, Boylston Street, I have not been informed of any complaints as of today.
So you're looking there for November 15th?
We're looking there for November 15th. That is a state permit that has been provided to us with restrictions during the day that only gives us approximately four hours of work time during the day. I came to you about two months ago, asked you for a request for nights. Since then, we've been averaging about 120 feet a night installing gas main versus, I think during the daytime before, we were getting, if we were lucky, on average, you know, 20 feet, I believe it was, a day.
Wow.
So we're moving along quite well. We were shut down also due to the MassDOT ComAb project for three weeks, and we've had some situations with details also working out there at night. But otherwise, the project is moving along. We anticipate being done with that project November 15th. And if we're not, we will not be back here. We will be going strictly to days on the state permit.
Okay, so I presume, so we'll, we'll just do an extension with the same conditions that we-
I would appreciate that, yes.
That we have on it. And what conditions do we have?
So that was 11 o'clock PM?
Yeah.
Because out there, we weren't allowed to start till nine. So at 11 PM.
Right, okay, so no jackhammering or saw cutting after 11 PM. Okay.
And again, we'll go ahead and we'll do the door knockers that we were successfully handed out last night.
Okay, so I'll move an extension of the noise bylaw waiver in connection with the gas main replacement project at 7:28 to 8:30, Boylston Street with the same conditions in the prior noise bylaw waiver to include no jackhammering or saw cutting after 11 PM. And timely notification of butters.
Yeah, we handed out door knockers previously.
Right.
So we've done that a couple of times now, so we'll do that again as well.
Yeah, you might as well, since you're doing Twitter on the other one, do Twitter on this one.
Yeah, if, again, if the, if they don't, if the town doesn't mind, then we-
Why would they?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion to extend the noise bylaw waiver to November 15th on Boylston Street with the conditions, say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
All right, thank you. Again, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Couple of remaining items on the calendar. Override Study Committee.
Heather, you want to take it?
This is a charge that's come before us twice before. It's incorporated some edits that both us on the board and staff have made.
As the agenda item was called, I was frantically looking at the calendar to see what date we might want to stick in as the reporting deadline for the override study committee. And I was looking at a, an early February reporting deadline, somewhere in the neighborhood of the ninth, which would be the Friday of the second week in February, the end of the first-
Right before the, right before the budget.
Yes, conveniently. So just to briefly recap, I know that you've all seen this a couple of times before, there would be eight components to the, to this 2017 override study committee's charge, utilizing the town's long-range forecast and budget projections to determine any structural budget gaps that would exist beginning in fiscal year 19, examining school enrollment projections and costs associated with enrollment growth, including the operational costs associated with the expanded devotion school and the high school expansion and ninth elementary school projects that we've all talked a lot about over the last few months. Assessing the adoption and implementation of efficiencies and best practices identified by prior override study committees and efficiency committees, examining potential non-override revenue sources, including cost feasibility, potential savings, and impacts of potential adoption and implementation. Benchmarking the town and school programs expenditures, revenues with comparable municipalities, compiling data that shows the impact that increased taxes and fees might have on taxpayers and residents, with input from the town administrator and the superintendent, prioritizing programs or other expenditures for funding, and analyzing, excuse me, the impact to town and school programs of the failure of the recommendations of the override study committee. Nothing new here, this is all stuff that previous override study committees have done before, but I think it is important to be specific as to what the, what the group is going to do. Again, just to briefly recap, we've talked about having a smaller committee than we did back in 2014, the last override study committee, targeting seven or nine members, and representation from a variety of different relevant boards and commissions, this board, school committee, advisory committee. We've received a number of applications, which I assume we'll start to delve into next week. And I think the goal of Heather and I is to, is to get this group together, maybe later this month, at the latest, the beginning of October. So again, I think the question before us this evening is just voting on the charge so we can sort of cement what the group is going to do. And in the future weeks, we'll look at interviewing candidates and appointments.
Okay, any questions, discussion? Ready for a vote?
Ready for a vote.
I'll move that we approve the charge of the override study committee. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And this is, the warrant closed on Thursday.
Thursday.
But I, there have been some minor edits, so we're going to have to go through a technical opening and closing of the warrant before we vote to sign the warrant.
Correct. So the warrant closed on Thursday afternoon. We have 22 warrant articles. And there were a few warrant articles that needed some minor edits to maps. So in order to make those changes, we're going to need the board to waive the notice requirements, open the warrant again. We will slide those changes in and then we'll close the warrant, all in one fell swoop. So I have a recommended vote that enables you to do that. And then, once that's done, you are ready to go ahead and execute the warrant. And I can run down the list of items after we're done with that part.
Okay, so I will move that pursuant to the authority granted in section 2.1.4 of the town's bylaws, the board waives the requirements of section 2.1.3 of the bylaws for the sole purpose of amending articles 4, 10, and 12 of the warrant for the November 14th, 2017 special town meeting as outlined by Deputy Town Administrator Melissa Goff. So all those in favor of-
The warrant is henceforth closed, if you will. That's the last line there.
Ah, the warrants is, I missed that very important last statement that actually closed it. So yes. So all those in favor of opening and closing the warrant, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we have opened and closed the warrant in one fell swoop.
Yes. So we have 22 warrant articles. The first three are pretty standard. We have our unpaid bills, collective bargaining, budget amendments. The next two are related to our school projects. The first one on the high school, the acquisition of 111 Cypress Street. The next one is the Baldwin School. As you recall, the last town meeting said that in order to move forward with the remaining, remainder of funding and that appropriation, you had to come back to town meeting for another vote. So this allows you to do that, if you're able to do that, or otherwise to reappropriate if we need to. The next three are coming out of Ben Franco's Senior Tax Policy Committee.
It's our tax committee. It's the selectmen's committee.
The selectmen's committee. You were, you were on it though, so that's, that's how I refer to that one. Number nine is coming from the License Review Committee, which I think Ben and Bernard are both on. The next six are related to the negotiations at the Hancock Village, Chestnut Hill Realty Development that they're negotiating with the town. And then we have a number of citizen petitions as well. We have one on documents associated with public meetings. We have a tree preservation bylaw. I know that Selectman Heller's committee is still working pretty diligently, so that will be interesting to see how they respond to that. We have a petitioner who would like to substitute selectmen with selectwoman. I believe we talked about that around the time the warrant was closing. Another petitioner has gender-specific language in town bylaws. We have another one on Indigenous Peoples' Day. We have a resolution to honor Brookline resident John Wilson. And then another resolution on sentencing, reform, and diversion. So 22 articles, ready for the board to execute.
Okay. So any questions or comments? I'll move that we execute the warrant for the November 14th special town meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
So we will execute the warrant. So now we have some boards and commissions. Turn it over to Mr. Kleckner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, there we have four board and committees this evening that were prepared to make some appointments to. The first is the Advisory Council on Public Health. In this case, there are two members whose term are expiring and, and we have no other applicants for the, for the council. You've interviewed them this evening and I will read their names and you indicate your vote. Dr. Anthony Schlaff.
Aye.
And Patricia Marr.
Aye.
Okay, and those were for three-year terms, I should have added. On the Economic Development Advisory Board, we have three members whose terms are expiring and no other applicants. The other, you've heard from Mr. Brown this evening, the other two will be interviewing later this month or later on. But given the fact that there's no other applicants, I think it would be appropriate at this point in time to, to approve Mr. Brown's application. So Cliff Brown.
Aye.
Okay, now we're moving on to the Brookline Commission for Women. Again, there are two, well, there's multiple applicants, and I'm not sure why there's so many that are expiring in the year 2017 because generally speaking, the terms of appointment on a committee should be staggered so that an equal number, so we'll have to look at that. And I also noticed that Ms. Rudish's term expired last year. But in any event, there are two of the applicants, the incumbents are interested in being reappointed, that would be Ms. Hatchet, Ms. Goldsmith, we interviewed earlier this evening. So at this point, I would, I would poll the board on those two names. Casey Hatchet.
Aye.
Jennifer Goldsmith.
Aye.
Okay. And then Park and Recreation Commission is a situation where there are three expiring terms. The incumbents have all expressed interest in being reappointed, and you've interviewed all of them, and then we have other applicants. So I am going to call the names that are the incumbents first, and then call the other applicants at that time. Clara Batchelor.
Aye. Aye.
Nancy O'Connor.
Aye.
Daniel Lyons.
Aye.
I think, I think in that case, I think they're all appointed, from what I gather, so I don't think, that's the, that's the number, the limit on members that we can appoint.
Be sure to send letters of thanks to unsuccessful applicants.
This is a very popular commission, as you know.
And I think that...
And urge unsuccessful applicants to consider other positions in, on town commissions or committees.
Yeah, or there could be openings on this commission in the future. Okay, I think we're done for tonight. Thank you.
Good.